We will now reconvene the council meeting for Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you call roll? Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne? Mr. Malave, report from closed session, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City council met in closed session to discuss the one item on the agenda. Council had a discussion with the city manager about that item, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just as a reminder to the public, we stream a live broadcast on Comcast Channel 23, as well as KPEG 100.9 FM, or you may click for livestream on the internet at www.cityoflompoke.com, click City Council button, and then view City Council meeting videos. If you are unable to attend in person, you may also make comment during oral communications or specific addenda items by calling 805-875-8201 before the close of public comment on the agenda, and you will be provided three minutes for your comment time, whether in room or via phone. I'd like to read a proclamation for Youth Week, whereas the benevolent and protective order of the Elks have designated May 1st through the 7th as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition of their services to community, state, and nation. And whereas Lompoke Lodge 2274 will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community, and whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to help develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership and go forth to serve America. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore, I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoke, California, do hereby proclaim the first week of May as Youth Week in the City of Lompoke and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens general, to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. And I thank the Elks organization for making the request. Their meetings are unfortunately at the same time as ours, but they requested it be read into record, and this will be then mailed to them. So let's celebrate Youth Week. There were no presentations given other locations since the last meeting, and now I will turn to our city manager for a report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I actually have quite a few tonight. One good, little bit of good news is we'll be starting our invocations next meeting, so on the 18th, we'll have our first invocation in a year plus, so we'll be back with that. I do need to ask, get this off the list here real quick, asking the City Council for approval to hold a budget workshop for the new budget cycle for this, or not this Thursday, but for the Thursday, May 20th, 6:30 here in the chambers. If you're all in agreement, if I can just, you know, sort of see a show of hands or a nod or...
Anyone not available on May 20th at 6:30 for a budget workshop?
I got two, three.
Anybody not available? Good, I saw another head nod. You okay?
I'm okay.
Okay. I asked for not available, but I had everybody nodding their heads saying yes, and so...
All right. So thank you for that. We're getting that all set up. So another one, the city's public survey on the ARPA funds, and that's the American Recovery Plan Act. So these funds are set up, I'm sorry, let me read that again. The public survey for the ARPA funds is still up, and it's accepting input. So it's online, it's listing not only different projects of all kinds of infrastructure and whatnot from the city, we also have an area on there for public input, so if we miss something, think something's, you know, really necessary, please put that in there. The survey is going to be open until May 14th. We need to close it because the 20th, we need to present the results to the council. So if you go to the city's homepage, right at the very front, you're going to see a link, a button, just click on that, that takes you to the, to the survey, and you can just start walking down. It asks you, very simple, to rank, so in police, I think they have about four items, rank it one to four, fire has four or five, rank them one to four or five, and you just walk through the list. It is in both English and Spanish, so we're trying to get as many people, as of this afternoon, we had about 556, 560 people that have responded. I'd like to see that up into the thousands if possible, but please do that before the 14th. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the State of the City address on May 19th. To sign up for it, please go to the chamber's website, it's at www.lompoke.com. For those who are unable to attend that event, the city will share the video at no cost on Tap TV and the city's website after the event. This one's interesting, I got show and tell. So the utility department's Conservation Division in partnership with the Lompoke Library, Santa Barbara Energy Watch Partnership, or administering, ministering, can't even say it, water conservation kit giveaways to increase awareness and build interest in water conservation practices. Kits were tailored for three separate age groups, children, teens, and adults, and will be available for pickup by appointment from April 26th through May 31st at the Lompoke Library. Kits will still be available also at the Lompoke Outdoor Community Market, which is our new market, beginning May 8th. So what they have for the adults is a low-flow water showerhead, that's very nice to have. For the younger kids, there's a little biodegradable seed pot with the seeds and whatnot, and a coloring book. And then the older kids get the bag to put their books and whatnot in, as well as some more information. They also have some seeds and some other items in here that are sort of loose. So little take-home type items for that. The City of Lompoke Recreation Division is offering to the community comprehensive and intensive American Red Cross lifeguard training courses that enable participants to become certified lifeguards. Through classroom activities, online e-learning, hands-on practice, participants gain the knowledge and learn the skills needed to work as a lifeguard, including accident prevention, lifeguarding techniques, emergency systems, water rescue skills, basic life support, and first aid. The course is approximately 27 hours in length, seven hours are e-learning, again, online, and 19 hours and 45 minutes are in-person. Upon successful completion of the course, participants will receive an American Red Cross certification in lifeguarding, first aid, CPR, AAD, which is the paddles to bring you back, and that's valid for two years. Cost of the training is $125, and registration can be done online at the city's recreation webpage, or the city's number at recreation, which is the 805-875-8100. So once you have that too, then you can apply to be a lifeguard here in the city over the summer, so it gets a little better for you if you can do that. Another new one that hasn't been there yet, again, with the Lompoke Outdoor Market, we keep getting better and better with it. There'll be an ongoing pop-up vaccination clinic at the new Lompoke Outdoor Market on Saturdays. They'll be using the one-shot Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccination, so no need to have to schedule to come back again, you'll get the one-shot. Please be sure to visit the market if you've not yet received your vaccination, that'll start this next weekend. On Monday, May 3rd, I actually had some people email me about this, so on Monday, May 3rd, the library did reopen for grab-and-go services. Community members may make a purpose-driven appointment to browse the library, check out materials, use the computers, and make, print, or fax items. The library will continue the popular, and I'll do my finger quotes, holds pickup service for now. Masks are required, and some services, though, are still not quite available, so we'll get to those as we move to the different lower tiers. If you need to make an appointment, please call 805-875-8775 to schedule an appointment. For the Village Library, because we manage that also, it will reopen with similar services within the next few weeks, but at this point, it is still closed, as the county is making repairs to the Village Library roof. The opening date will come as soon as they've completed all the repairs to the roof at the library. And lastly, I mentioned it a couple times now, the new Lompoke Outdoor Market held on Saturdays is doing well. Last week, we had even more people than before, and as well as vendors, we had 36 vendors who rented actually 50 spots. The new event's getting a lot of good comments from all the visitors, come out and visit the new outdoor market each Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And that's the end of my report.
Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, thank you. Our next item is consent calendar. Public comment on consent calendar items is three minutes. If you would like to comment on one of the three items, you may come to the microphone, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. Public comment on consent calendars now open.
Thank you. Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I urge you to oppose two and three on the consent calendar. Number two, the destruction of obsolete city records. I don't think any city records are obsolete. I think history is very important to guide us as we move into the future. The vagueness of this resolution assures you they will destroy some things that would benefit citizens. I urge you to vote no. Number three, photovoltaics. I urge you to vote no. Nitrogen trifluorides are used in the manufacture of solar photovoltaics. Nitrogen trifluorides have 17,000 times the global warming potential of carbon dioxide. They also last in the atmosphere for 500 years. By approving this adoption of this resolution will assuredly damage the environment. Thank you.
Philip Gallanders, Lompoke. And I too am speaking with regard to the second resolution, destruction of obsolete, within quotes, city records, and I would have three questions to ask you. Number one, what defines obsolete? Number two, what records are to be destroyed? Number three, how old are the records that are intended to be destroyed? Are they 19th century, 20th century, 21st century? This is a very vague resolution, and as an historian, it bothers me. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on consent calendar? No, ma'am. Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201, and remember to mute your television, PC, or There will be an oral communication in between that.
Oh, good evening. I'm not hearing very well because I'm so far back, but my concern is about the sale of the extra space of Beatty Park.
That will be up next.
Next, okay, thank you.
Seeing no additional calls, we will close consent calendar public comment and bring it back to council. At this time, all items under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting. If council has any questions without pulling the item, you may ask them, and we can get clarity before pulling. Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to have a little clarity on the destruction of obsolete city records as far as the transparency of what's going to be destroyed, or we can pull it and have a discussion later, but if someone can kind of clarify from which parameters these are being chosen, and I believe before, when they had destruction of city records, we, the council was given a list, or there was a list provided prior to the destruction of them.
So I believe our city attorney has volunteered to answer that for you?
Yes, I'd be happy to quickly address that, and if there's any full discussion, we should pull the item, but just to quickly address that, there is a resolution attached to the staff report, and attached to that resolution are the list of documents that are proposed to be destroyed because they have reached the life that the city is required to hold them under our records retention schedule. So usually, most city records have to be kept for at least two years, and then after two years, the city is allowed to destroy them in order to save the cost of storing these records when they're not needed anymore. We have a records retention schedule that sets out the period of time that we have to store every single different type of record. It's very long. And then when they are destroyed, my office, the city attorney's office, has to check before council approves their destruction to make sure that each one of the categories of records is old enough, and we've held it for a long enough period in order to legally destroy it. And there is also a list of all the documents attached to the staff report with the date that the document is from. So for instance, the first attachment to the resolution is from the Community Development Department, and it lists, there's a list of loans that the city paid, and these loans are dated the year 2015, and there are six of them on this first page of the list. So 2015 is more than two years. It's, all of these that are in these lists, I have checked to make sure that they are old enough pursuant to our adopted retention schedule in order to destroy at this time. So the first list is from Community Development, the second list is from the Police Department, and they also have listed the date of all of the categories of records. And the third list is from the Human Resources Department, and those are records that are dated from 1976 to 2010 regarding old workers' compensation claims that the statute of limitations has long run on. So those are the documents that are proposed to be destroyed in this agenda item, and I can answer any more questions if you have them.
Yes, I do have another question, Jeff. You mentioned by age from 2015. Is there any historic value or any legal value to any of these, you know, records? Okay, I get it, two years, in most cases, records are five years. Just want your expert advice as far as, yes, you went by age from 2015 on, is there anything of historic value or anything that could be of value to a future agendized item or of historic value that we could actually use as a precedent for a future decision?
I'm not going to say that there is a 0% chance that these documents could never be useful in the future. Of course, maybe there's a chance that they could if something arises, but these kinds of decisions, you have to weigh the cost of storing every single document that we have in City Hall forever versus the, versus the benefit of not having to pay those storage costs. So generally, if a document is older than the length of time that we have to store it in our retention schedule that the council has adopted, the policy determination has been made that it's not necessary anymore, and the benefit of destroying it outweighs the downside.
Yeah, thank you for that response. I still, your answer actually answered my question that said, you know, you can't 100% say that there's no legal benefit or historic value to a future agendized item or decision at City Hall, so it seems like if anything falls under that category, it seemed like it should be scanned and put in electronic format. Yes, it's work, but I think that destroying historic documents, it could, since you couldn't say with 100% that they're not useful in the future, we should have that option. And I'd like to propose that to council, that we have that option to possibly electronically format any documents that are deemed under that category that the city attorney has actually said he can't 100% guarantee that.
Councilmember Cordova?
Without getting into discussion, because I think at some point in time, we need to decide if this item needs to be pulled, but I was just going to say that, we went through this when we went over the retention schedule last year. And so I have reviewed the documents, or the list, the requested list from the department, the three lists that are available, and I didn't see anything that stood out to me that I felt was actual historic value that would need to be kept, but I think we're going off of our retention schedule, which the council approved, and we went through each line item last year, so. we went through each line item last year, so.
All right, thanks for those questions and feedback. I will entertain a motion to accept consent calendar.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. Oh, clear mine, please. Yes, thank you. And that passes for zero. For one, sorry. For one. All right. Do we have any staff presentations? Seeing none, we'll go on to oral communications. Oral communications are open for three minutes. You may call 805-875-8201. If this is in regards to an agendized item, it's preferable that you wait till that, but this is oral communications on city matters, and you may come to the podium for three minutes or call in at 805-875-8201. Floor is open.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Lompoke mayor and city council all took an oath to defend the United States Constitution. COVID restrictions initiated by you against citizens constitute perjury of oath, a felony. Your actions violate the God-given rights of citizens that are protected by the United States Constitution. I call upon each of you to resign as I requested in the notarized affidavit sent to each of you by certified mail. None of the actions taken by you are backed by science. Masks don't prevent disease. Healthy people should not be quarantined. Throughout history, masks have been used to silence and starve insubordinate slaves. Long-term mask use can lead to serious illness. 250 years ago, colonists gathered in churches and pubs to plan their escape from the king's tyranny. You have closed most independent businesses, but particularly places where people gather, churches, bars, restaurants, and coffee shops. You have allowed the healthcare community to restrict access. Alarmingly, friends and loved ones have been banned from comforting and monitoring the healthcare provided to their loved ones. You have locked the people out of the people's house. Citizens are sovereign, you serve us. None of these actions by you are backed by science. The goal of these directives is to rob us blind and wipe us out. Your failure to respond to my affidavit confirms your perjury of oath. I have filed a notarized complaint for each of you with Sheriff Bill Brown to remove you from office and place you under arrest for actions taken by you to deny citizens their God-given rights as enshrined in the United States Constitution.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201.
Philip Gallanders, Lompoke. Back in February, I sent to each of you a letter regarding the windmills and the potential difficulties that we will have in the city for the very, very large trucks coming through the city from Floridale onto Ocean through to I Street and then up. And I asked at that point if there had been a professional damage assessment made. I received no answer from anybody. That's okay. But I hope the assessment has been made, because just today, driving out, I saw a sign saying that Floridale is going to be disrupted for work up from mid-May to the end of May. I assume that's in preparation for these trucks coming in. I may be wrong. But if it is for the trucks coming in, and if the destruction, which was professionally estimated by somebody I know at approximately $3 to $4 million for repair, a mile of city streets, if this is covered, fine. We don't mind that the windmills will destroy our view. If the cost is covered, I don't know if it is. I have not seen anything from this council saying it is. I'm not seeing anything from the city saying we are covered. I hope we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did we have any generalized written oral communication?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Once again, the number to call for oral communications is 805-875-8201.
Tori DiPello, Lompoke. I represent Elevate Lompoke Local Medical and Retail Cannabis Dispensary, and June is going to be our two-year anniversary serving Lompoke and the surrounding communities. We currently employ over 40 people local to Lompoke in the 805, and we are extremely grateful for this opportunity, and we want to give back to Lompoke for supporting us and letting us do what we love in a safe and legal way. Some of the ways we have contributed to the community in the past two years have been donating to Barkin Park, as well as volunteering for their cleanup and repainting of the park assets, as well as cleanup in the open spaces off the 246, as well as the 1. We also contribute to Riverbend Bike Parks Volunteer Day. We're constantly contributing to local veteran associations, food banks, toy drives, and other charity organizations. Since our town was struck with the lockdown during COVID, we took initiative to give a overall 25% off our entire store to give back to those that were struggling without work. In addition to coming up Armed Forces Day, we are donating over $3,000 in medical cannabis to veterans in need. We also offer medical use, education, outreach, and support to cannabis patients with serious conditions. If any of you have seen our building located on South H Street recently, you'll notice that we hired local artists to paint a beautiful mural on the south-facing side of our shop to contribute more to the town of art and flowers that we love so much. We've also cleaned up that lot on the south side of our building to use as a community space and community garden. We would like to offer this space for use for any community events, and we would like to do more for the community that we love so much. And if anyone has any opportunities or suggestions for ways that Elevate Lompoke can give back, we would like to hear them. Please come on by the shop and ask for Tori, and we'd love to work with any of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Seeing no one else rise and no phone calls, we will close oral, we will wait to make sure. Is this, oh, okay, it's on hold. Got it. We will close oral communications and go back to the agenda for item four. Item four is a public hearing for the adoption of Resolution Number 6402 for NCS 21 declaring an unused approximately 7.64 acre portion of Beatty Park as exempt surplus land, and adoption of Resolution Number 640321, abandoning the use of the property for park use and authorizing the city manager to take necessary actions to proceed with the sale of the property to the Lompoke Cemetery District. And we have our city manager to present.
Thank you, mayor and council. This one's been a long time coming. I'm sure you probably remember it before I even got here. It was, been on the list to do for quite some time. So we are at the final step. We just need to open the public hearing, see if there's anybody out there that wants to speak against this. But this portion of the park, for those who aren't familiar, it's in the very back, up the hillside, closer to the cemetery boundary lines. It's not maintained by the city. It's in its natural state. We haven't done anything to it since the city acquired that property. There's no future plans from the city to do anything with that property at that point. When the Cemetery District first talked to the city, there was discussion. I've now met with the district multiple times. What they plan to do is still keep it an open space, but eventually, they'll be using it to put in a memorial wall where they would place the urns of a cremated loved one would go in there with a sitting area that would be a serene place to sit and contemplate. But it would still be open. They would actually do more work than we do. They'd be keeping the arroyo clean and whatnot. So after talking with our Parks Department, and we brought this up at different times with the council, there really wasn't a true need for that portion of the park for the city because it wasn't going to be an active part of the park. We brought this up earlier, and at the last, I think it was 60 days, Jeff, how long, how long has the public hearing been?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, not 60, 30 days. So you lose track these days. I personally have not had any calls, emails, or anything on that. I don't think the city clerk has gotten anything on that one. The Cemetery District is excited because that would fit into their expansion plans. It'll, and I will say, it's probably going to remain in its state as it is right now for up to probably the next 10 years, maybe a little bit longer. As they formulate the plans, they have to save up money to do any of the work over there. So tonight, what we do is open and conduct the public hearing to receive any objections to the city council's intention to abandon the park. We then close the hearing, adopt resolution declaring the property is exempt from surplus land, adopt resolution, the next one, overruling possibly any objections that may be received during the public hearing, determining to abandon the park use of the property and authorizing staff to proceed with the selling of the property to the Lompoke Cemetery District for a dollar, authorize the city manager to execute the agreement of purchase and sale in a joint escrow instructions, or provide us with other directions. That's my report.
Any questions for the city manager or city attorney before we open for public Seeing none, we will move to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak on this item, you're more than welcome to come to the microphone. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, radio, or computer. And we will start with in-room commentary.
Okay, good evening again. I have to confess, I could not hear this gentleman. Is there any way the speakers can speak louder into their microphones and the microphones turned up?
We'll work on that.
Okay, he had several things to say. My only concern is that we must protect trees in this town, and I do not know from his conversation if any of that area contained trees connected to Beatty Park. Does anyone know?
We will ask that question after you have finished your public comment.
Trees are as good as gold. If you don't have enough trees in your environment, your environment will become stale and dead and death, and that's what we are fighting now with this virus. Scientists have proved the value of trees. And if you have trees on your property, protect them, water them, prune them, and keep them healthy. And I don't know how this relates to Beatty Park, but I would like for the gentleman to be sure that whatever property he is asking you to provide for the cemetery use does not include trees.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, dear.
If you'd like to speak on this matter, you may come to the microphone. You know where you are.
Mayor Osborne, council members, Ken Austin, Lompoke resident and member of Lompoke Cemetery District Board of Directors. I would like to assure everyone that, you know, we've been working on this for a long time, as Mr. Throop has mentioned. Our main charter as a cemetery district is to ensure the health of the cemetery district for hundreds of years out, and planning extra land, which we have no plan to develop that area anytime soon. Some people said, well, you're going to put fences around it. There's no plan to put fences around that area. We just want to have that for future generations to expand the cemetery when it's needed. And again, most of us probably won't be around when that happens. So again, I just want to assure everyone that, I think this has been at least five years in the process, a lot of negotiations, a lot of money spent working this out, and I think it's a beneficial thing for the community and for Lompoke Cemetery District and the city of Lompoke, so to provide growth for us. So that's it. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dean Weber from Lompoke. My wife and I have been homeowners on Clemmons Way, which abuts this property that's in question. My biggest concern is just the access to the park. There's a foot trail from the end of Clemmons Way that accesses the public park, which we find very valuable, as well as the other residents in the area. It sounds to me like there's nothing in the immediate plans to put up a fence or anything. So that's my main concern. Another note, I have noticed a few years ago, someone planted oak trees along that trail, and they're looking very healthy, and I'd like to compliment anybody who made those efforts. So just the access to the park is critical for us. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Parkinson. I'm from Lompoke, and I would further to his questions about is this development, this proposal, is it going to close that walking trail? I live in the same neighborhood, and I walk that trail every day. It's been walked. My neighbor put the little bridge in there 30 years ago. So people walk this trail every day, and I'd like to know if it's going to shut off the access to the park for us residents that live up there in that area and other people that come through there to walk up further into the neighborhood. So that's my concern, is that it's a dedicated path. I mean, I brought pictures of it if anybody who wants to see it. It's been worn and used heartily by many of us in the neighborhood, and we'd hate to see that change. It's part of the desirability of living up there, is that you could just walk down the street instead of walking all the way down the hill around the neighborhood and then back the same way. So I'd ask you to consider that, because if it was in your neighborhood and you used it every day, you wouldn't want it to get shut down. If you annex the land to the cemetery, fine with us, but we still, if you stop that path, I would ask that you build a bridge, something that we can get to the park still because it's been like that forever. Thank you.
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoke City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please go ahead.
This is Eric Trupshank from Lompoke, and I wanted to talk about the land donation to the cemetery. Like the other two just said, we want to be sure that public trail stays open. It's, I don't know why that wasn't included in the mapping that you all did, but it's been established since I've lived there, 35, 40 years. So please make sure the map includes that public trail, because right now, you just show it as foreign land or something, wild land. So again, we need to keep that trail open. Thank you.
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoke City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks. My name is Darryl Donahue. I'm calling in response to the inflection upon Beatty Park. I'm in total disagreement on that. The park is for the living, people enjoy that area, and I think it's absurd that you would even consider. enjoy that area. And I think it's absurd that you would even consider cutting off public access to that.
Hello. Is that, do you mind turning off your radio in the background? Is that all?
That's Darryl Donahue.
You're live in the council meeting. You have a few more minutes to give public comment if you'd like.
Yes. I'm totally opposed to any infringement upon the boundaries of Beatty Park. And what's proposed, it's just, to me, it's just telling that it wouldn't even be considered. And I appreciate your consideration of it, and I hope that you will consider my feelings. I'm certain that I represent a lot of other people who enjoy that park area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on item four?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise and no additional calls, we will close public comment on item four and bring it back to council. Counsel, do you have any questions, concerns, statements? We'll go ahead and reopen for one more call. Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. Please go ahead with your public comment. You have three minutes.
Yes, hi. My name's Diane Troopshank, and I've lived next to Beatty Park for 35 years. And in listening to what everyone has said, I just wanted to add a question. Why would the council consider voting to sell to the cemetery land that was donated for a public park for recreation without first getting public input as to how that land could be used by the public for recreation? Beatty Park's a beautiful park because of its open space. It has a natural state, and I urge you to not let that open space be turned into I understand that people are concerned about the walking path that's there, but we cannot get a guarantee from the cemetery, we tried, that that path will never be fenced in. And it's not only about that walking path, it's about the beauty of having wide open space in a park. So I would hope the council would at least consider my opposition to turning it into cemetery land. Thank you.
Thank you for your call. We will now close public comment once again and bring it back to council for discussion. Counsel, discussion, questions? Counsel member Starbuck.
I'd like to go ahead and just move, we accept staff recommendation on this. This project's been going on for well over half of a decade. Talked with many people up there at the cemetery, Mr. Powers, et cetera. I mean, it's not a horrible thing that's happening up there, greater good of the city. So I'd like to move staff recommendation.
And we need a second for that.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any questions or concerns before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, item number five, approval of substantial amendment to fiscal year 2019, 2020 action plan to include coronavirus CV3 funding for the Community Development Block Grant Program, approval of CV3 fund used for an access Lompoc program in response to COVID-19, and adoption of resolution number 6404, parentheses, 21. And we have our Community Development Program Manager Chanel Vaillée to present.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council staff. Tonight, we are here to hold a public hearing request and request council's approval of the substantial amendment. The allocation and the amount of $394,259 was made possible through the CARES Act and is restricted to activities that prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19. The allocation is to be included in the 1920 action plan per HUD and our city's partnership in the county's home consortium. Funding criteria is reflected here on this slide. CDBG funds cannot be replaced city or state funded functions. CV3 funds are restricted for COVID-19 response activities. Funds must be used to benefit low-income persons. Expenditures not in compliance with HUD must be paid back from the general fund. Staff is recommending funding be used for an access Lompoc program to safely open Lompoc facilities as listed here on this slide. Funding would be used to make capital and program improvements, like remove barriers for safe distancing, installation of no-touch fixtures, and to purchase computer software to access public programs remotely. Staff recommends after council receives the public comment, that council approve the selection of the access Lompoc program, adopt the resolution, authorize our city manager to sign agreements to receive the funds, and approve the submission of the amendment for inclusion to the 1920 action plan to HUD at the end of the public comment period or provide alternate direction. Thank you for this time. I've completed this presentation.
Any questions for staff? Council member Ball.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm excited to have some of this be used to possibly get some things open. Can you talk about the reasons we need to be focused on that and updating ourselves to be, I guess the way I would say it is, there's some rules and regulations, whether from the state or the county, that we just have to kind of follow. Can you expand a little bit on how some of these things might work to get us open sooner in these areas?
Sure. With this 300, and I believe it's 900, $394,000, we'd be able to safely open up our facilities. As you know, we're still closed here at City Hall. We have lots of business that needs to be conducted, things conducted in person. A lot of times, it's more easier for all of us in the community. We have heard our community where they want us to open. And if we're able to use this funding toward making it safe for us to open, it'd be a great thing.
Seeing no additional questions, we'll thank staff, and we'll move to public comment on item five. If you would like to speak to this item, you have three minutes. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, radio, or computer. If you're in the room and would like to speak on item five, you're welcome to come to the podium for your three minutes. Were there any written communications on item five?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio. Seeing no one rise in council chambers and no calls coming in, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. Any questions from council or a motion? Council member Ball.
I'll make a motion to, let's see if I can get this right, to accept an approval of substantial amendment to the fiscal year 1920 action plan.
I'll give him a second.
So you want to approve the substantial amendment to fiscal 2020, 1920? You want to approve the CV3 fund used for the access and adopt resolution 640421?
Yes, that one.
Awesome. All right. Read into record, and you have seconded, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Yeah, it's, you know, if you only move for that first half and the other two things don't happen.
Well, I saw lots of things start to be, I didn't know how long to keep reading.
Just for the public's education and our own, it's just a safe bet to read that headline when you make your motion if you're approving it. And that way, you cover all the bases. That's historically, unless there's some change or addition you'd like to make. All right, so there's our little educational bit for the evening. It's been moved, it's been seconded. Any additional concerns or questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right, our next item is also a public hearing. This is approval of fiscal year 2021, 22 draft annual action plan and budget for the Community Development Block Grant and Human Services Program, adoption of resolution number 6405, parentheses, 20. And Ms. Vaillée is back.
Thank you.
With this year's actual CDBG.
Yes. Yes, Mayor. We, tonight, I'm seeking council's approval of the CDBG and home human service program budgets and authorization to submit them to HUD with our 2122 action plan. The primary objective for CDBG program is to develop communities for low and moderately low-income persons by providing a decent, safe, and suitable living environment. Important funding criteria to note is CDBG funds cannot replace, again, city or state-funded functions. Human service donations are restricted for human service activities only, no administration, administrative costs. Funding must benefit low-income persons, and expenditures not in compliance with HUD must be paid back from the city's general fund. The city of Lompoc is entitled to receive from HUD $530,174 for this new fiscal year. Of the total entitlement, there's a 20% maximum that can be used for administration, a 15% maximum for human service activities, and then the remainder per HUD is to be used for capital projects. Additional funding for the 2122 CDBG grant year will come from CDBG program income and human service donations from our utility billing customers. As stated before, up to 20% of the entitlement may be used for program administration. Staff is recommending council allocate the 122,968 of the total toward the year's program administration, which includes salaries, the UAL supplies for loan program administration, including the management and servicing of active loans and monitoring, and the fair housing program. Staff is also recommending council approve the capital funds in the amount of $362,350 to be used toward the continued progress on, that we're making on improvements to our parks. And $50,000 toward Catholic charities to continue the mobile and single-family home emergency repair program, and the $90,500 for the human services, as listed here, recommended by our Human Service Commission. After council receives public comment, staff recommends council approve the budget and recommendations as provided. This also concludes my presentation, and thank you again for more time. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Council member Starbuck.
That's what I like, a short presentation.
Thank you.
Two questions. First question, you've listed here, human services donations, these are obviously round up in utility bills, et cetera, et cetera. It says, the amount requested from the human services program is comprised of estimated donations, but we've included $10,974. Is our estimate right, or are we hoping we get it, or do we have it, or?
We do have it. That funding is secured funding from donations that we have already received.
Okay, so the word estimated was just kind of extra in there, then?
Yes.
I buy that.
Thank you.
You're my hero. The next one is, I think it's kind of important when you say, capital plans, that's happened. We're phase five. What do we do in phase one, two, three, and four? This is something we should be proud of, and nobody knows about it.
Oh, thank you for asking. So with phase one, we used the, we used it toward a feasibility study where we looked at 13 of our parks for accessible pathways and restrooms. With phase two, we did the Thompson Park with the new bathroom, and the baseball park out there and the new pathways. With phase three, we did Pioneer Park and that brand-new bathroom out there, ADA bathroom. And then phase four was our beautiful new Beatty Park playground, all-inclusive. If you've been out there, you've noticed it's almost like Lompoc's little Disneyland. Everybody's out there playing, having a great time. And then with phase five, we're planning to put more accessible sidewalks and cam, lighting, possibly some cameras for safety. And then whatever we have left over, it'll be rolled into another park improvement.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff? Thank you. Seeing none, we will close and bring this to public comment. If you would like to speak on item six, you're welcome to call 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, radio, or PC. If you'd like to speak here in chambers, please come to the microphone, and you have three minutes.
Good evening again. You're discussing community development, I understand. And I want to thank you so much for the additional playground equipment at Beatty Park. The children just love it. And the wide space where they can do a little kicking with their soccer ball in open space, and also the golf, disc golf. People really enjoy that park, and I like to go just to read under a shade tree sometimes. But my concern is about another area of city property, and I don't know where it should be addressed, but could I just make a comment so that you can consider that at another time? There was once upon a time, since it was a long time ago, that we had city property just east of the highway at the airport area. And it was my understanding, we were to have more fire department equipment and building, and perhaps firemen, to fill that space for our community. And I don't know what has happened to that. I don't hear about it. So would you please consider how, when you are developing your community, you can consider having additional fire department space for, I think, a building and for employees, the firemen? And I just wanted to bring it to your attention and ask you to consider use, speaking about that, if we have money to develop it, it would be wonderful to do that, because we do know that fire is a great danger for all of us. And also, have you ever considered raising goats to keep the grass down? It is a great way, if you do not have poison on the grass, to keep fire down with goats. Thank you.
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio. Madam Clerk, did we have any written commentary on item six?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you.
Good evening. You're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide your public comment. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Osborne and members of the city council, Anne McCarty, North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. I just want to go ahead and... I just want to go ahead and thank you in advance for approving the recommendations by the Human Service Commission. And I'd also like to publicly thank all of the Human Service Commissioners who worked tirelessly to read the applications and meet with us and, and have conversations about the work that we're doing in the community. We're very proud of the work that we do at the North County Rape Crisis Center and I know that all of my partners that are also up for funding as well are very proud of the work that, that, that they do as well. And we're, we're thankful to you for your consideration for the funding and we're thankful to the commissioners as well as Chanel for all of the work that she provides the nonprofits in town. So, thank you very much.
So I will give one last call for phone calls or in-room comment. All right, we will close a public comment on this item as we have no one rising and no additional calls coming in and bring it back to council. Any questions or concerns or a motion? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that?
I'll give you a second.
And we have a second. See, that's the other easy option, just so you know. Yep. Yep. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or concerns before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. All right, we now have item number seven, new business, adoption of resolution number sixty-four oh six parentheses twenty-one, adopting a countywide phase two community action plan to address homelessness. And we have Ms. Chanel Alvay again to introduce our county representative to make the presentation.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Council, this item was initiated by the county of Santa Barbara. We have here with us today Dinah Lockhart, Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development. And we also have Kimberly Albers, the county's homeless assistant program manager with us by telephone. She will be presenting the slides for this presentation. Kimberly?
Hi, Kimberly, you're live in the council meeting.
Thank you.
Your slides are up. You can go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor Osborne and council members. I will be sharing by phone. I'm Kimberly Albers and I serve as the homeless assistance program manager for the county of San Barbara. And in chambers is Dinah Lockhart, the Deputy Director of Housing and Community Development. I will provide a brief update on the current state of homelessness and ask for the council's support in adopting the phase two community action plan to address homelessness. So the, the three main areas that we've noted for the current state of homelessness is that the unsheltered population is increasing. There's a significant decrease in the number of persons occupying our normal shelter and transitional housing operations and our shelter, shelter system staff and residents have managed COVID-19 outbreaks and capacity reductions because of the need for physical distancing. They are some of the heroes of this pandemic. Therefore, the sheltered, as the shelter population has decreased, it's resulted in more persons outdoors and living in vehicles. In addition, there are growing encampment impacts. Responding to encampments has been increasingly challenging and the conditions people are living in are distress, distressing. We also have, oh, I'll still, I'll still stay on that first slide if possible. More resources are available, but they are largely one-time. Santa Barbara County has largely relied on state and federal funding to address homelessness. And the recent increases in resources created a critical need for reliable, ongoing funding. The staff report that you have includes important information about persons experiencing homelessness in Lompoc that have completed an assessment to transition back to housing since January twenty twenty, but this will not be covered in the slides due to time constraints. So on the second slide that you're now seeing, this is really the summary of what we're looking for from local jurisdictions when coming to you, asking for adoption of the phase two plan. To work with us on community engagement, to educate key stakeholders on the need for affordable and supportive housing, engaging local businesses and community members in solutions, and coordination in both planning and funding. For planning, we'd like to create a regional inventory map of all available and underutilized public and private land for housing. Identify new sites for alternative housing models and vehicular programs across the county, which really appreciate the city of Lompoc working with Safe Parking recently. Streamline a comprehensive process for planning and input for proposed new developments and plan for ongoing revenue sources. For funding, we'd like to maintain a comprehensive list of funds dedicated to homelessness, align contracting expectations, best practices across funders, and ensure regional capacity to apply for and receive funding from the state for housing and homelessness. So we'll go to the next slide, which is actually where we jump into the system level goals. So if the slide can be advanced. Can the slide be advanced? Can you all hear me?
Yes, yes, it's been advanced. Thank you. Yes, we can hear you and it's on system level goals.
Okay, for some reason that's not showing on my screen. So the system level goals are five overarching goals of the plan that include prioritizing and ending dramatically reducing homelessness for specific populations. And we're starting with veterans and youth and families and then obviously want to serve all populations. Increase the housing inventory units and beds dedicated to homelessness. Create a culture of shelter diversion and prevention across the homeless response system. Improve overall homeless system performance and achieve the continuum of care strategies and benchmarks that were approved in two thousand nineteen. And just kind of to make that one make a little more sense, the continuum of care is a, a large group of community members. You have city representation that comes to that and so they had worked diligently on some strategies and benchmarks back in two thousand nineteen, which have been included in the plan. So if we can go to the next slide. So from those system level goals, then we go into strategies and priorities areas. And again, the staff report goes much more detail and the, the plan itself really details each of these strategies, but I'll briefly review them here. Increase access to safe and affordable housing. Use strategy two, use best practices to deliver tailored supportive services to meet individual needs. Strategy three, to build a collective action plan to improve data sharing. Strategy four, to strengthen support systems available to help residents obtain and maintain housing. And is, has the slide been moved to the strategies and priority areas?
Yes, there's a slight delay.
Okay. And then strategy five, to build provider capacity to address the needs of specific populations. So these, again, these five strategies really make up a, a work plan that shows different timelines, who's responsible for the goal. And so while the plan is quite detailed, a hundred and four pages, if you've had a chance to review it, it, it does really to get into the details of how to achieve each of these strategies. And then if we'll go to the last slide, how will we implement, coordinate, and lead the effort with the plan? So the adoption of the plan by city councils, which we're well under, underway, we just had Santa Maria actually pass it earlier this evening. We've had four other councils already adopt the plan. The Board of Supervisors and the Continuum of Care Board have also approved the plan. There is an elected leaders forum that Mayor Osborne has been participating in and will be meeting again in a, next week to provide policy direction and monitor progress monthly. The Santa Maria, Santa Barbara County Continuum of Care will continue to help with system improvements and coordination. And then the county department directors are meeting regularly as the Homeless Interagency Policy Council to address internal solutions, priorities, and actions. And then the community services department, where Dinah and I both serve, will continue to convene key stakeholders to coordinate and advance action steps. So the system level goals, the strategy and priority areas, and this implementation work plan really are the focus of the efforts to address homelessness and we're just so grateful to be here tonight asking for your consideration of adoption of the plan so that we can share that, that regional commitment. And I'm available for questions and I apologize for the delay. I couldn't quite see where we were at.
Uh, thank you, Kimberly, for your presentation. Um, yeah, I did read, I believe it was a hundred and four pages and it was very thorough and balanced across the county, so, so thank you for that. Staff, do we have any questions for the county or our staff?
Staff would like to also make a, a comment.
Sure.
Please. We believe that this, this plan is fair and we would like to take the opportunity to be able to collaborate with the county to address homelessness and we're seeking your approval or rejection to this resolution.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
I have six questions. They're probably more county than you, but you're on the line of fire. Sorry.
It's all right. Kimberly's also on.
I guess the first question is, and it says here in fiscal aspect of it, general fund, that triggers me. There's probably thousands of dollars worth of work in this phase stuff. Where's our funding? Where are we getting the money to get involved?
Currently, the city is already, we already have funding that we are, that we put toward homelessness. We are already doing a lot of the actions that the county is asking us to do in this plan. We're using home funding, we're using CDBG funding, and there was a little bit of general funding that was already approved through the budget that you all have approved.
Basically, a true, you know, yes or no answer on this would be, this is funding we could use in the city for citizens actually too. It's not dedicated, it's not earmarked for homelessness. It's home funding, et cetera, et cetera. So we're taking money from the city and applying it to homelessness.
So I can respond to that. So our.
Yes or no?
You, you are already spending them and what the county is asking us to do is be a part of the collaborative effort. We would utilize our dollars for Lompoc homelessness. We do have a homeless population in Lompoc. So much like we are utilizing funding for the Safe Parking Program or we're utilizing funding for Bridge House Shelter, it's Lompoc dollars being spent in Lompoc. They're not asking us to take our allocations and spend them in Santa Maria or Santa Barbara. They're asking us to be a, a voice at the table, a player, and be part of the collaboration. They're not asking us to spend our money anywhere else.
I'll take that as a no then. So we'll go on to why are we involved and who on our staff is our social services? We do not have social services. We are a city. Who is our social service person?
We provide human service efforts and utilize our funding in that manner. We, the mayor sits on the Continuum of Care Board, I believe, or it might be council member.
So the mayor is our social services rep. And our human services commission is our other entity on social services.
We.
All right, so going on to question three, what was phase one of this?
That would be answered by the county.
Would you like me to speak to phase one?
Go ahead.
So phase one was crafted sooner, so the reason it was divided into phases, we would not ideal, but adopted those same five strategies that I introduced tonight in priority areas. And it allowed us to be eligible for funding, but we didn't have the complete data set or had not done this extent of the community outreach that we felt like was essential to having a comprehensive plan. So phase one looked more generally and created those general strategies where phase two is this very detailed work plan. And so we've been working on it since two thousand eighteen.
Little difficult for me to hear, but thank you. I, I'm gonna go move on now with what we've done in the past with homelessness. Six hundred thousand dollars in a triage center. No reimbursement from anybody on that, I mind you. This was straight up funded by the citizens in this town out of our enterprise funds and reserves. We had people in wheelchairs showing up saying they lived in the riverbed. We brought, people were brought in here for this and we footed the bill. Every penny of that came out of Lompoc's pockets. I don't forget that and there was no help offered. This issue could be taken care of. We have a huge county office here on our street. It has huge letters on it, social services. Whenever I have them at my shop doing what they do best, go down there, go there, get off my place, go to social services. I don't send them to city hall. I, I just, it, it seems like it's almost like the county can't do what they're getting a lot of money to do and so they're gonna put it on us, a policy fiduciary body, to take care of it. I, I'll go back here into your phase two. And I looked at it here, it's on page sixty-four. It's called Mid-County, Lompoc-San Ynez Valley. We're asked to provide sixty-one beds, permanent supportive housing of seventy-six. Somebody needs to divide that up for me and tell me how many temporary beds and permanent supportive housing units are going in San Ynez.
So.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Starbuck, I can just share that it, it was about seven individuals that have been counted in the San Ynez Valley where the, you know, the larger population is in Lompoc, so we would anticipate that most of that gap that, that is, is in the Lompoc wider area, but certainly there is a need for services and housing in San Ynez as well.
I, I didn't hear that. Could somebody repeat that for me?
So what she's saying is if you look at the numbers counted, there were seven homeless individuals counted during the twenty-twenty point in time count in San Ynez and so that is a reflection that the bulk of beds that will be needed are over in the Lompoc Valley, but that San Ynez will be addressing their homeless needs along the same amount that were similar to the count that was made.
It, it's pretty inequitable in my eyes because I see lots of new people showing up here from other areas. So I'm gonna say, and everybody says it, you know, well, everybody puts them on a bus and sends them to Lompoc. I'm starting to believe that it's true. So we're involved in the Lompoc-San Ynez with sixty-one temporary beds. Okay, so you minus seven, we're stuck on the rest of them here in Lompoc is how I'm reading this.
Councilmember Vega.
It's pretty clear that the county, the county is more implemented, is more concerned with implementing a plan and a way of generating revenue to continually support the homeless, which I understand. But on a, on a humanitarian basis, but it doesn't seem like they're focusing on the mental health aspect of the people that are affected out there that are there. There's no goal to actually heal or help most of these people here in Lompoc. It's mostly a, a revenue generation, which basically goes to the county. The county has to then disperse. So anybody with a plan can go and ask for money. And our, and I, I'd like to see some, some movement forward here in Lompoc to actually clean up our city. We have issues here that we can't even get the county to throw in on and basically we have to go into our enterprise funds or we have to go into our water fund to clean up the riverbed. And, and instead, we're blaming or putting it on public safety when in fact there's another entity involved with pushing more people over here. So basically we have Safe Parking, we have all these nonprofits that are looking for revenue. And it's, it's all with a goal of public safety maybe, or to help others. And you know, I'm all for helping others. But as I said, our crime rate is higher than normal that we would, that we would like. And we're actually putting a welcome out, out to ask for more so that the county. and we're actually putting a welcome out to ask for more so that the county can generate more revenue, so they can push more people to Lompoke when Lompoke can't control its own destiny. And I think we need to take, take a stronger, we have to have a stronger focus in helping our own city clean itself up, get rid of the graffiti, actually empower our police so that they can actually take care of their job. They're not mental health experts, we're not mental health experts. The county's in charge of mental health, and they're not in charge of it, at least not for Lompoke. I think Councilwoman Starbuck mentioned, they do have social services, they do have mental health. There aren't any additional people being dispersed to Lompoke for mental health to actually address the people that have issues. What happens is you see them, or you see people out on the streets. If it was somebody else with a police call, they would say, for your own health and safety, we're going to arrest you. But these people get to go up and down the street, and no one does anything because maybe they don't have any money.
So do we have any additional questions for county and/or for our staff? The program is a detailed, 104 pages detail, mental health and addressing mental health is in it. I don't know if county wants to talk about part of the mental health programs that will be implemented at some of the sites and some of the wraparound services that are included in it. It is a comprehensive plan across the county, and we're being invited to be at the table as part of the discussion so that we can make sure the needs that we have are met instead of overlooked. And I just want to make sure while we have county present that we've gotten the questions answered. Councilmember Cordova.
So I'm hearing the concern from our, from our fellow council members, from my fellow council members on the dais. I think I read the plan, and I think it sounds great. However, when I look at the numbers and I see that Lompoke had in 2020, 211 total in the, in the point in count, and then I see a city like Santa Maria, who is more than double of the residents of Lompoke, I see they had 382. I mean, we're really not that far off. So Lompoke has a major population. We have a major issue here. So my concern is if we take on this program and we are now a part of it and we're held to, you know, participating and doing all these things, the question is fair, where are we going to get the funding? Is the county going to consider giving that additional portion to Lompoke because we desperately need it?
Go ahead, please.
Councilmember Cordova, and Mayor Osborne, and Councilwoman Vega, thank you for the comments. I think, you know, part of us being here, right, is to listen and hear your concerns. So I will say that, you know, with Good Samaritan Shelter, that you have a strong provider that is offering a lot of the services, but certainly that our mental health, Be慧 behavioral wellness department, we have a public health nurse that is full-time working in the Lompoke area, and we certainly, you know, invite, you know, greater participation in these discussions if you feel like your needs are not being met. We do know that, you know, as compared to other parts of the county, that Good Samaritan has been able to house a higher percentage of those experiencing homelessness in Lompoke, which we really celebrate as a success, that people are getting housed. You'll see that on page four of the staff report. And so I think that shows that the resources are coming there and, and serving your residents. And we don't have any, any data that supports sort of a, you know, people being moved to Lompoke for services. You know, both Santa Maria and Santa Barbara have large shelters as well.
Kimberly, an additional question. My understanding from this is by putting together a detailed plan and having the local city councils support it, it opens the door to your applying for additional funds and that it grants you additional points in your application if you have regional support for this plan, which is one of the reasons you're asking for our support, is so that you can apply for more of these funds and then utilize them not only in Lompoke where we need it, but also in the other areas of the county so that they are addressing their own homeless issue and Lompoke isn't carrying that burden.
Mayor Osborne, that's correct. So while we certainly know that homelessness is a regional issue, and as council members have pointed out, right, a lot of the social services resources come to the county to be, to serve throughout. It is important for us to have that regional action plan and commitment so that we can continue to bring those services to, to the region and, and like I said, have some of the successes that we've had in Lompoke this year.
Any more questions before I yield to Councilmember Ball?
So I know last year, right around this time, when we were looking at the presentation or we were considering the presentation to go into the, I believe it was a co-op of county. And, and at that time, the numbers, I think Lompoke was getting like 187,000 versus cities like Santa Maria, who were getting like 500 or 600,000, or cities of Santa Barbara that were getting like 700, 800,000. Again, I just look at the numbers, and I think we're really not that far off from Santa Maria, and we're a much smaller community, and yet we get a fraction. So how do these numbers, when we, when we say, okay, we're going to, we're going to, the county's going to collect this money, and it's going to distribute it, how are we distributing it? Are we, I think that's what we need to know because we have a very high number of, of the at-risk population, the homelessness, but how is that money being distributed? How do we qualify to get more of that money so we can really actually start addressing this issue? Because I hate to say it, but as Councilmember Starbuck said, we, we did what we could a couple of years ago by trying to clean up the riverbed, and nobody came to the aid. So we just need to be a little more conscious about the pressure that Lompoke feels at this current time when trying to deal with this situation and trying to, to provide for that homeless population as well.
So Councilmember Cordova, I can, I can speak to that. So most of our funding is, is very scripted with federal and state requirements, and so we do generally have to go out with a notice of funding availability. The city or a nonprofit provider that's working in the city would be the ones applying for those funds to bring additional resources to Lompoke. So we don't, we, you know, you have to have someone to actually provide the services, the shelter or the housing, and so you have to have an applicant that's bringing those dollars to the, to the table. So the Home Key Project, that I think you're all familiar with, was a way, right, where a developer came in and then was able to apply to bring, you know, $5 million in, in housing from the state and local sources in order to house 15 individuals, Lompoke residents that did have mental health issues. So it's absolutely through an application process, it's not an allocation that comes to each city. We do have to go through a competitive NOFA to allocate those, but we certainly saw when the homeless emergency aid program funding came in, the city of Santa Barbara was a direct recipient, right? They applied as the city for funding in order to bring additional resources to their, to their region. So it can be through a nonprofit provider or through the city itself, or even a, it could be a public entity for some funding when there's housing development involved. So most of the funding that comes to us is scripted, that it has to be awarded through a notice of funding availability process. And so that would be the way to make sure that you're getting more resources to have, you know, have an applicant like a Good Samaritan or another provider that's applying for those resources.
One last comment, Mayor Osborne. And last time when we discussed this, too, I had asked the question, you know, so when people apply for these services, they're applying, and yes, if you, if you're in Lompoke, you can apply, but it's not strictly for just people that are in Lompoke. It could be anyone in the county that can apply in Lompoke and be, I guess, be housed in Lompoke, even if they're not currently living in Lompoke. Is that correct, or is that not correct?
Councilmember Cordova, we strive, it's really one of our core mission to make sure that people are being housed in the area where they're from and that they have those supports. And we're, you know, very committed to that. So our coordinated entry system, which controls that flow to housing resources, is absolutely looking for individuals from that region or that area to put in a, in a housing opportunity. We try not to, you know, relocate someone unless there's a domestic violence situation or potentially a underlying cause that makes them want to be housed out of their area. Almost always, they are housed within the area that they are already residing.
Councilmember Ball.
I've kind of just waited to hear what the rest of council said, and I do take every single comment very seriously here. There are definitely some issues, and I will point out that, I'll just say it, I'm in full support of this plan, phase two. Why? Is it because it answers perfectly how to solve homelessness? No, state doesn't have a perfect plan, county doesn't have a perfect plan. City of Lompoke, we sure don't have a perfect plan to solve homelessness. We're probably not going to solve homelessness. But something from my opinion that I think we have been missing at the leadership level is making sure that we are at the table with the county. So many important discussions happen on the allocation of funds, on education, on how we might apply for certain things. And if we're on an island to ourselves and not collaborating in good faith to some extent, we're missing out on the opportunity to fight for Lompoke, to fight for what we deserve to have. So I just take a slightly different tact. This is not approving a perfect plan. There is no perfect plan, but we have to take this human issue seriously. Talking about humans here, people, real people. So again, this is an effort by the county to put together some sort of coordinated collaborative plan. Is it going to solve it? Is it going to make it perfect? Is it within our right as Lompoke to fight for more resources and to articulate why we deserve it? Absolutely. But I do want us to be at the table. I want us to be able to raise our hand every single time in closed rooms, in places that aren't this public forum. I want to know, I want to get that information. I want to be able to contribute to Lompoke by saying, this is what we deserve and we need the help. So again, there are lots of questions that need to be asked. This is not a perfect solution, but I just want to make sure that Lompoke's at the table. That's very important to me personally.
Councilmember Vega.
So noted, Councilmember Ball. I'm an advocate for helping anyone, but at the same token, you know, we've been going through this for years. This is a funding source for the nonprofits through the county, and there's no guarantee Lompoke's going to get their fair share. You're right, for people that aren't at the table. At the same token, they have no skin in the game as far as to help us clean up our riverbed, to actually help us, and we know that for a fact. It's already been proven that they're not there to help us advocate for it. I actually have spoken to people that are on the streets there, and I have, I've spoken to a whole bunch of them, met a lot of them. And, you know, basically what happens is as we fund the services here, it's another reason for them to come here because what they were saying is you may, they may say it's for people that are living here, but Councilwoman Starbuck is correct. People are being sent here because there are services here, such as beds, if they subscribe to these programs. When they don't subscribe to the programs and the guidelines of these homeless shelters or Good Samaritan or whatever, they end up in the riverbed. So our population increases. So what happens is if they don't have family, or if they have family, that's one reason to send them to Lompoke, but also the other one is from my conversations with these people is they were sent here because their service is nearby. So we have to be cognizant with the county that they understand that we're fighting for Lompoke, not Santa Maria, not anyone. They're going to, we are a funding source for this entity through Lompoke, but as Councilwoman Cordova said, how do we know that we're going to get our fair share? Okay, which basically hasn't happened yet. It's basically here to fund the housing of the people that go through this thing on a continuous basis, but there's no goals and expectations to solving any of this problem because the people that aren't, aren't going to sign up for this program end up possibly in other places, maybe other cities, and in the riverbed. And I'm concerned with the riverbed issue because of the funding that it takes to clean this, to clean it up. It's taken a lot out of the city. The water fund should not be the resource for this, no matter what city staff and the legal department has said that it's a use because of EPA, it's an excuse to use the money. It's not really a valid excuse.
All right. Any more questions for county or our city staff? We've moved into discussion about where we believe our system is, but I want to make sure before I release city staff or the county staff that we've gotten answers to our questions. Councilmember Starbuck.
I just had a question. Whoever can answer, please try. Is, are we, if we don't agree to this, we decide not to participate and try to collaborate on this complicated issue with the county, what are we looking at in terms of not accessing something or funds? Are we jeopardizing resources potentially by rejecting this?
I would say it depends on what the county were to go after. Are we jeopardizing our home consortium funds? No. Continuum of Care partnership? No, because we're still members of the Continuum of Care. But if the county were to go after funding that has a nexus to this collaborative effort, then yeah, if they got some money, they could say, we're not going to spend those dollars in Lompoke. They're not partners, they're not at the table. I don't know that the county would do that, but that could be the potential, I think. There, I read the plan, I didn't see anything that spoke to any new funding resources that they would withhold if you weren't a member of, or you didn't adopt this plan as a coordinated member. But Dinah's here, she could probably speak to it, if they would create some policy to say they wouldn't do that.
Councilmembers and Mayor Osborne, so I think, you know, we're here because we truly believe it will take a, a regional commitment to address homelessness. We aren't here to make it punitive. You know, we're asking for your partnership in adopting the plan, with the exception of adopting the plan and, and having, you know, council member and the mayor continue to serve on the elected leaders forum. There's no hook here. We're, we're asking for your partnership, we're asking for this regional effort to move forward, just with the adoption of the plan, not, not with any other hook that is hidden in the 104 pages. So we'll, again, I humbly ask for you to consider adoption of the plan so that we do have regional action and commitment.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. So this is Dinah Lockhart, and as Kimberly indicated, you know, what this plan is doing is, is creating a very broad, kind of a, as they say, 10,000-foot level picture of what we can do as a city, as a county, together, right? We all have to work together. I think the role for city council is to create leadership about this issue so that it's part of informing community residents, it's letting the city know that it's part of a much larger problem. It's interesting when I hear presentations by Kimberly to the city of Santa Barbara, the city of Carpinteria, the city of Guadalupe, everybody thinks it's their own problem. And then we go to the different cities, and we realize everybody's got a homeless community, and it's really very sad. I mean, I know you also read the LA Times. They're dealing with a terrible problem, and a lot of it is a lack of affordable housing, a lack of housing for people who have disabilities, who have chronic illness. I had a call this evening from a public health nurse at Sampson Clinic. There are two people, one with breast cancer, another gentleman with, with heart problems living in their car, and they're trying to find a shelter room for these folks. These are not people who don't want to work or, you know, lazy. These are people who are very, very ill. We're seeing a lot of seniors living in their homes. It's awful. And I think what we're trying to do is say, we need to have everyone at the table. I absolutely support Councilperson Ball about that, that we need your input, we need your ideas. You have certain perspectives, you've gone through working with families in the riverbed. We are actually trying to support services at the Bridge House, maybe bring in other pallet units to help provide housing for those residents. There's a new program that's trying to start up, too, with safe parking. These are vehicular homeless. You already have them here in the city, okay? Any of the streets, you see the RVs, you see people living in their cars, you go to the storage centers, I've seen them, okay? So they're here already. The point is, can we give them services so that they're not living in these conditions? They want to live normal lives, okay? They want to live normal lives, okay? And so what we're trying to bring is resources to the community. We saw an excellent project, Kimberly alluded to, Home Key. We had a vacant office building. It was here in Lompoc. We brought $5 million from the state. It is now providing housing for 14 homeless individuals from Lompoc who were behavioral wellness clients. So I'm just sharing, you know, again, here from the community that it's not meant to be negative for the city at all. We're just trying to work in partnership. The elected leaders forum is another opportunity for our elected leaders to participate with other elected leaders from all over the county to work on these particular issues. So anyway, I just wanted to share, you know, our, our gratitude for accepting this presentation this evening and again, we always look forward to partnering with the city on, on these issues.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember Ball?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, well, it's obvious we're not going to get any funding on this. I mean, that history has proven that Lompoc will not get funding minimal. I mean, let's look at the riverbed as our classic example there. I mean, in the big scheme of things, how many chronic homeless people have we housed in Lompoc? We housed 14 people at a cost of $5 million. What a bargain. I tell you, if we were to take our housing and put it towards our kids where they would have somewhere to live, because we're in a city that refuses to grow or allow growth, we went over the top on low-income housing here, we sustained the majority of the county. You know, I mean, 14 people, $5 million. Do the math and figure out what we got to do for the other 61 that we're going to have to do something.
Councilmember Ball.
The other 61, as long as the county is willing to work hard to find state funds to help us, I, I'd be hopeful that that would be the case. Again, this is not local Lompoc people putting that bill. This is the county working with the state to help us address a need. Am I wrong in saying that?
Councilmember Vega.
I have to agree with Councilmember Starbuck. There's no loss here by not joining this consortium. I think Lompoc has to draw a line in the sand. What happens is if we had a population and we had them all categorized, there's people that are here and we're going to help them and we could actually figure out the success stories, uh, we don't have that. We basically don't. What we do is we attract more and Lompoc has a welcome mat for more and Lompoc can't support more. Councilmember Starbuck is right. The consortium and these meetings and all that is meant for politicians to go back and talk and yes, they're, they're well-meaning and, and heartfelt, okay? So I don't want to say anything about that. I think that trying is, is admirable, but Lompoc hasn't had any success stories except for minimal success stories because it's already admitted that we're not getting any money from them unless they decide to go after it and then we got to go and actually have to go lobby for that money. It's not like an automatic that Lompoc's going to get a certain percentage of whatever they are awarded. And I, that's, those are the numbers, Councilmember Ball, which I'm, I'm on the same page with you, but I'd like to see the numbers that Lompoc's going to get a certain percentage of whatever's awarded and that's where, what we're missing here because it ends up that it gets lopsided as Councilwoman Cordova says, it could end up going to Santa Maria. And then we're stuck with the bill here from the water fund and whatever else here when we already have our police force stressed out. One of the reasons that I was not an advocate of safe parking in the beginning wasn't because of the safe parking aspect because I've, I feel that people are on the edge and you don't want to push them into the riverbed, you know, they're sleeping in their cars and whatever, but it's because it was going to be pushed on our public safety department, our police department, which weren't mental health. It wasn't fair to push them on them to come here and monitor the parking lots at night. And that was when the safe parking program first came out, but I wanted you to know, I'm an advocate for the public safety, but we shouldn't be pushing the mental health aspect of it on our police force and our fire department. That's the county's responsibility because they get the funding.
All right. We'll go to Councilmember Ball and then we will do public comment.
I hear everything that's said. I think that makes a good point. I also think that makes a good point that all the more reason we should be, should be at the table. If we're talking about the scope of allocation of resources and Lompoc needs somebody to fight and say, we have a higher percentage and it's not fair, I want to be at that table. If it comes to lobbying the county and guilt tripping them and begging and pleading and whatever it takes to get more resources for Lompoc, I'm personally willing to do that and lobby them, but I want to be at the table and I think the city needs to be at that table.
Any last words from the county before we close this and go to public comment?
Mayor Osborne, it was a little bit fuzzy for me. Is it possible for me to speak to Councilmember Vega's comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I just wanted to again point out on page four of the staff report, um, that, you know, 51 families were housed, um, since January 2020 in the 2020 year and 96 individuals and, and these are folks that again were assessed in Lompoc and then subsequently have been housed. And I, I apologize for not spending more time talking about the success stories like the two, um, family ADUs that are now part of Mark's House, the rehabilitation efforts in Mark's House, um, to, to be able to house Lompoc families. And, um, so I, you know, I, I, we, we mentioned Home Key earlier, but definitely don't want to miss that, you know, 51 Lompoc families have been housed with these resources this year. And, um, and again, I think you just have to drive down to see the Mark's House project to see, again, those are homes for, for two more Lompoc families. So we certainly feel like there are success stories to share and, um, and, you know, we, we certainly know that the long-term wounds from the riverbed cleanup in 2018 continue. We're hearing that in the conversation, but, uh, we, you know, we look forward to being part of those efforts in the future through staffing and outreach and, um, alternative shelter that's required by the law.
Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and close this presentation by staff at both the county and city level and we will turn it over to public comment on this item. You're more than welcome to call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And we will open the floor first in room for your three minutes.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I applaud the councilmembers who expressed concerns that solutions to this problem have not been presented. Multi-governmental organizations contribute to homelessness as a growing business. You closed businesses to throw people out of jobs and onto the street. Schools have been closed. For decades, California has worked diligently to destroy student learning and achievement. California used to be number one in the nation for student learning. Now they're dead last. That's by design. I've been in the classrooms, I've reviewed the curriculum, I've watched the students. The curriculum they're using was never designed for learning and achievement. It creates confusion and stress in the child's mind. Zoning, regulation, and fees price most Californians out of the housing market. I've sat in this room and I've listened to business owners and residential builders plead with you to be able to advance their foundation to feed or to put their pipes under the road or whatever, and you've not been helpful. City staff has been punitive with many residents and business owners with what they've done. That all increases homelessness. There is little to no mental health services offered to citizens. I think most importantly to recognize that chaos is a fundamental component of communism. We need to address cause and effect and look for solutions. How are government agencies contributing to the problem?
Thank you. The number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communication on this item?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. If you're going to speak, the in-room, come to the podium.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Pretty good? Okay. Hi, how's everyone doing? I'm a Lompoc resident and, um, but also I'm from California and, um, I think that for, if you build it, they will come. So it does make sense that if it's like, everybody in the county wants to send everybody here, it's like, well, then they're all getting a benefit out of that. So they should definitely be contributing equally, in my opinion, although that might sound like communism, but it's just the county budget and they think that the alternative is that they could just build or repurpose real estate throughout the county and evenly distributed and people would go there. I mean, it's not that far away for people if they had housing in Santa Maria, they would go to Santa Maria if they had it anywhere in the county. So if it's all going to be centered here, it's like, we already have the prison and if it's just the more affluent places in the county want to just send everything distasteful to them here, then everybody should pay for that and it could generate jobs here and possibly retrain people to get back into the workforce, which would generate prosperity, but you'd have to invest a lot in it, not be like begging to get funding, in my opinion. Would have to be, and not on the river also. Personally, I think that's a bad idea ecologically and spiritually. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alicia. I actually wasn't planning on talking, but after listening, I just figured I'd get up here and speak. I was born and raised here in Lompoc. My family's been here for over 200 years. I've witnessed the rise and fall of drug addiction in this town and I really feel like, I don't want to say every homeless person is a drug addict because that's not the case, but watching friends and family personally succumb to drug addiction, I can say that it's huge. It's a huge part of our homelessness. A lot of my friends and family I see every day on the streets are drug addicts. They don't choose to, they would love to work and be able to work, but they can't because their hunger and their drive for drugs is stronger than their need to work. So they make a choice and it's to get high. The only way we can tackle that is if we tackle the drug problem in Lompoc. As long as I've been here, Lompoc has been a central hub for drug trafficking. It's prevalent in this town. And when I was in junior high and high school in the nineties, we had a great drug and gang task force that started getting those numbers way down and you guys let it go. It'd be great if we got it back and we put more funding towards that because if they could get out on the streets and communicate with these people that need help, they need help, they need rehabilitation. If they're not going to be rehabilitated, then all of this is for nothing because you will give them a house and then the drugs are just going to take it right back. That's Lompoc, guys. I can tell you even because I played travel sports my whole life, every time I go to San Inez, Santa Maria, friends there always told me, oh, Lomp, you're from Lompoc? I go to Lompoc to get my drugs. That's how, we're known for drugs here. It's ridiculous. So attack that and then a big part of our homeless problem will be cut, probably in half, if not better.
Thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
I'm Kathy Howard, I'm a Lompoc resident. I can understand your concern about the past, but this is now and the future beckons. Please get over it and look beyond. Councilman Ball, you're right on, we have to have a seat at the table. Please make sure that you have a seat at the table. Nobody has any answers to this. If you read anything about homelessness, it is multifactorial. So be sure that you're involved in whatever is going on. Thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Thank you. My name is Terry Hammond, so I live in Lompoc and I believe at least three of you councilmembers need to, um, buy into this Phase Two plan. It's not a solution, it's a management of the homeless. I live, uh, I own a home near the river. It's unbelievable the amount of homeless activity that's along that riverbed. Lompoc is not going to solve the problem by itself. You are going to have to share responsibility for the homeless in our community. You are going to have to share the responsibility that this is a regional problem or a, a state problem, a national problem, and we're going to have to start, start spending money to manage these people. So you can ignore it, you can just keep saying it's not going to happen, we're not going to do anything about it, but it's going to continue to grow and it's a cancer and it's going to eat us up. So just ignore it and we'll see what happens to Lompoc. Good night, councilmen.
Thank you.
Good evening, you're live in the Lompoc City Council meeting. You have three minutes to provide public comment.
Hello. Hello, my name is Voli Waldau and, um, it occurs to me that regardless of whether or not we jump on the back wagon and, uh, have a seat at the table, the homeless problem is going to be there anyway. It just seems to me it'd be smarter to be at the table and hear the collaboration and be the, part of the collaboration to fix the problem, uh, in Lompoc and countywide. Perhaps they, the other cities would like to hear our thoughts on it, but like I said, the problem's going to be there anyway, whether we are part of the, uh, pl- plan or not. So it just seems to be the smart thing to be part of it. Like, uh, Councilmember Ball says, have a seat at the table, let our voice be heard. It just seems to be the smart thing to do. To not be there at all is just to put our head in the sand because the problem's going to be there anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, if you'd like to provide comments for public in-person, you may come to the podium. If you'd like to call, the number's 805-875-8201.
Hello, my name is Susan Hutzbeth, a resident of Lompoc and I just wanted to say that homelessness, I've just seen it increase in Lompoc. It's really sad seeing so many just pushing carts around and disheveled and begging for money and food. It's a really sad thing and, uh, on benches, sleeping on benches and, um, I don't have the answer. I know it's a big problem and, um, we're all struggling to try to understand how to solve this. I do, uh, think that going to this committee and, um, participating and giving, um, comments and receiving ideas is a good thing, Jeremy. I did, I do want to tell you that I did participate in a cleanup down in the riverbed, not last Saturday, but the Saturday before, with a group I believe that is called Plant a Seed. And, um, you wouldn't believe how much garbage is down there over our aquifer, a lot. And, um, we worked from nine, I worked from nine with, to 12 with them and we picked up a lot of garbage and there's a lot more garbage to be picked up. So I just want to encourage the city of Lompoc, anybody who's listening, who can go down there when they are down there to help and that's just part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We will close public comment and bring it back to council for discussion. So, um, just so the rest of council is aware, I have participated with the county since they began the countywide, um, discussions when they invited elected officials, which we have all been invited to. I've attended all of them. I know Councilmember Cordova joined me for a few of them when they were in-person and the difference has been, because this started in 2018 and got stronger, is that we're all at the table and when the discussion happens, we get to voice what's going on. we get to voice what's going on in Lompoc. And how much we have already carried the burden of 30% low income and a great deal of the Bridge House highest capacity being right outside our city limits, that if they leave Bridge House, they go into our river. They don't return to one of the surrounding communities. And it has built a level of communication with other elected officials hearing that their community is impacting ours. So there, there is a difference when you participate in the discussions and when you participate in potential solutions and are at the table. And yes, this, I would love for this to be allotted in ways that we got percentage of funds and we knew what was dedicated coming to us. But because it's not that way, because it is an application process with a notice of funding available and that nonprofits or the city itself, if we had a project we wanted to fund for homelessness or another nonprofit wants to manage this, has to apply, we need to be there and be a part of this and understand what's going on and be a part of that discussion so that it isn't an impact, but yet a benefit on our community, and hold our fellow communities' feet to the fire about solving some of the problem in their own city. So that we aren't carrying the burden of homeless issues in our community as we have unfortunately for the past 10 years and seen it grown. So I, I get it, I get the history, I get the hesitation. But this is a new step forward, this is different. This is a well-researched, well-thought-out plan. This is data collected on point in time over years. I am, I participated in the 2020 point in time count, and I'm happy to see the numbers actually went down. We counted 249 in Lompoc in 2019 and only 211 in 2020. So there is some positive movement there. I also was part of a team that was dedicated to counting those living in their cars. And we have a huge amount of senior populations and families with children and seniors with dogs that aren't comfortable in shelters looking for support. So I, I don't think this is a problem, as Dinah said, that is just ours. It is nationwide. It is a problem we all have to look at. It is complex, it is not easy. And I don't want to try and solve it in a vacuum and make mistakes. I'd rather partner and be at the table and discuss it with others trying to tackle it so we can share our lessons learned, that we can advocate what's best for all of our communities and hold the feet to the fire for communities like Santa Barbara and Santa Maria to invest in the homeless issues in their community first and foremost. So that we don't have to worry about how much money we're asking for because we're trying to solve the entire county's problem because it's ended up here. So I know that there are members of council that are hesitant about this, but I think it's a bigger danger to not be at the table and not continue with this process. It's, it's, it's a much better process than what I saw when I sat on C3H. And it was just a bunch of politicians who did get together and sit around in a room and talk about and hope what we could get done. This is an actual plan. This actual process, this has everyone at the table that provides services. Every community is in the discussion, every count. There are additional counts here that didn't occur several years ago. So we're counting more communities than we ever have, and meaning we're spreading the load. Instead of only three of us communities counting it and our numbers being the highest. So I, I'm asking council to consider taking a new direction on this, working with the county and developing the relationship we need to solve this problem. Councilmember Cordova.
I think the plan is pretty comprehensive. It does provide a great roadmap for tackling the issue collectively, assuming that it works and assuming that, you know, it, it, it gets off the ground and, and the needs are met in each community equally. I support the position of being at the table. I've said that from day one. But I can't, I can't also disregard the concerns that my fellow council members have because after being on council for the past three years, I now hold those same concerns for our community. And so being at the table is very important. But I think at this point in time, Lompoc cannot stand on an island on its own and think that we're going to be able to tackle the issue on our own. And, and the reality is, is that we don't have the resources ourselves to be able to just completely do it ourselves. And not providing a, a plan within our community to solve it, then we really have no choice but collectively work with the region and the county and, and hope that this plan is something that will work to address a lot of the issues. I'm, I'm hopeful, when I read the, when I read the plan and it talked about the implementation work plan, it said, you know, homelessness in Santa Barbara County is a regional issue that will require regional-wide commitment, collaboration, and action. But it also went on to say that the plan outlines for the communities to address homelessness and advance a high-functioning, well-resourced homeless crisis response system. So that's what I'm hoping to see out of this program. In, in addition to though, it also brings to, to present that simultaneously, we need to address the larger structure of issues that impact homelessness, including poverty, income levels, deficiencies in living wage employment, housing availability, and housing affordability, to really make any meaningful changes in the homeless population. And in those areas, Lompoc needs support too. And I think that, that when, when Councilmember Starbuck talks about, you know, us having restrictions within our community to be able to grow and expand, if we just keep growing in homeless population, Lompoc will never represent the numbers and will never have the capability to get those higher-paying jobs and to offer those higher living wages to our residents and to our community members. So I'm going to go out on a limb. I'm going to hope that, that, that by us collaborating in this effort, we are taking a different approach as, as our mayor is saying and as Councilmember Ball's saying. And that we're going to come to the table and we're going to say, "We want to be part of the discussion, but we also need our voice to be heard. We need Lompoc to be represented." And there's no doubt that us as a community, we need to target the drug problem that we have. And that requires this council to really think about restructuring this community and all the other areas that we need, that we need to really focus on funding so that we can start making those alternative solutions to those areas where we need to improve and be able to grow and improve our community in that way. So I, I guess I can put a motion on the table that says we, I, I think we should collaborate. I think that we should accept the plan. I think that we should be at the table. And I think that just sitting behind and not taking action is not enough. I think we need to be heard and we need to be at the table.
Thank you for the motion to adopt Resolution 6406, which is adopting the countywide Phase Two Community Action Plan. And I will give you its second. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to clarify here that just because we do or do not join this consortium doesn't mean we're not at the table for homelessness. This is a consortium to obtain revenue. It's kind of like a grant-writing entity where they're going to go after money and then there's going to be a percentage they're going to spend. So if they are successful, as the county representative said, there's money there. Kristi Alakorn obviously said, as Councilmember Ball said, "Do we lose any money here?" Not right now, we don't, okay? Sitting, getting a place at the table, Jeremy, is, is, is applaudable. But again, I'm concerned with the outcome, you know? We always put out the compassion thing, but we don't have it goal-oriented to make sure. And I believe that you're probably the one that would be passionate enough to try and make sure that Lompoc gets their fair share. But we, but up to now, this isn't the first time they've come to us. What they're looking for is us to join their consortium, to tell you, "You're going to have a seat at the table, but you still have a seat at the table as far as the homelessness." This is just another entity from which you can have a seat at the table in their group. You know, if you, if you choose not to go with it, you're not, you're still an advocate for homelessness and you're still able to speak with the county. I just wanted to clarify that. So I just think, again, this is a, a way of funding the nonprofits to invite more. And I just think it's never-ending. And I do agree that, again, Lompoc is going to be the hub and it's going to be the center of people thinking that everyone that needs help is going to come here. And I don't believe Lompoc can afford inviting more. We need to take care of what we have. And that's where I have a concern with the county. Because they seem to be good at selling, but I don't see us getting our fair share.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any more questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 3-2. All right. Item number eight, new business, consideration of letter of opposition to AB 377, the Rivas bill, water quality impaired waters. And staff to present?
We're getting her online.
Okay.
After she's done, I do have one quick comment.
Okay. So we'll have our-
Hi Stacy, you're in the council meeting now.
Environmental Coordinator Stacy Lawson is on the line to present the consideration of letter of opposition. Stacy, you're on.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I wanted to bring forward for your consideration a letter of opposition to Assembly Bill 377 authored by Robert Rivas and introduced in February of 2021. The bill has, as its goal, making the surface waters of California to be fishable, swimable, and drinkable by 2050. To me, that seems like a very short timeline. As well as the fact that the way that they want to go about doing this is by circumventing the existing surface water regulations that are enforced by the State Water Quality Control Board and the regional boards. And also limiting the extension and terms of agreements that are negotiated between those who discharge waters into the surface waters of the state. For example, the wastewater plant or the landfill. As well as the cities who are responsible under their municipal stormwater permits for discharges into surface waters. The method that they want to use to ensure that the water is drinkable, fishable, and swimable by 2050 is to go ahead and give the city and counties penalties to ensure that they have done everything possible to ensure that that is going to happen, and that's the case. The example that was given in the committee discussion was that we'll have to have package plants or, you know, treatment plants for our stormwater. That's somewhat problematic because our stormwater isn't in pipes. Most of it's in the street. And so that would be not only difficult, but would require a lot of money. One of the big issues that we have, as you're aware, with water quality regulations is a lot of times they're unfunded mandate. And the cities, and particularly small disadvantaged communities, really need state and federal funds in order to achieve these kind of lofty goals. And so with, the other issue that I have is that when, in our watershed, which is so huge and goes all the way up to Los Padres National Forest, there are really only three communities. And those communities could be penalized tremendously, but you're not going to change the substantial amount of sediment in the San Inez when it does run. So with all these considerations, I think that it needs more, to be better thought out and to have the consideration of the small disadvantaged communities and the funding available if they want to achieve these types of goals. So for that, I would recommend that the city council consider the attached letter of opposition and direct staff to make any desired changes and submit that letter to the State Assembly Appropriations Committee. Thank you, and are there questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Mary.
Yes.
One quick addition, I was asked just before the meeting to see if I could find out. This is just a partial list, but I had to count individually. At least 130 different agencies of all kinds have written the same letter and sent it off in opposition to the legislation from agricultural districts, water districts, wastewater districts, farm bureaus, Association of California Water Agencies, California Association of Sanitation Agencies, California Municipal Utilities Association, cities, Agora Hills, Campbell Del Mar, Hidden Hills, Menifee, Norco, Oceanside, I mean, it just keeps going on, Thousand Oaks. It's the League of Cities, it's just, it's, it's a poorly-written bill. And it really could, if it ever passed, the damages alone, as Stacy was saying, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 per day. And it's not like, okay, we found it today. It keeps going until you fix it. And it could be unfixable for cities such as ours on how we lay it out. So it's, it needs to go away.
Thank you for that additional information. Any further questions for staff? Councilmember Ball.
So I'm a, I'm pretty out there on the left side. I'm an environmentalist. I believe that the climate needs to be addressed. But this specific bill, the way it's written, is impossible for Lompoc to ever achieve these standards. So hear it from me, I think this is unreasonable.
All right. Thank you, staff. We will close the presentation and bring it to public comment. You're more than welcome to call in on item eight for 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio. And in-room is up. You have your three minutes.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. This bill is obviously fraudulent. The real purpose of this bill is to further restrict our access to water. What comes to mind is what I referenced earlier. Rob us blind, wipe us out. Please support this letter of opposition.
The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your television, PC, or radio. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication?
Yes, we did. We had a letter from Mr. Ron Fink. It was submitted to the entire council and provided in the public forum here as well as on our website.
Thank you. If you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to come to the podium. Seeing no one rise and no additional calls, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Any questions, motion? Councilmember Cordova.
I motion that we accept the letter of opposition as recommended by staff.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Did we have any additional written communications that have not been expressed any earlier in the evening?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. This is your final opportunity to speak on city matters. For oral communications of two minutes, you may step to the podium and have two minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay? My name's Lorna Robles. I'm here with my oldest daughter. We moved up here with my two youngest kids. So I'm here with three of my four adult children, living in a great part of Lompoc. But we came here tonight to ask about the killing of Chris Ruiz. I'm extremely concerned because my two youngest kids, my daughter really fits the physical description of Chris in terms of age, looks. They're part Schumash. She is very- She is very socially, she has serious social anxiety. If a cop came up to her and said anything, she would freeze. I don't know that she would run, but she would not act, react appropriately. And my son has a really serious hearing problem, and he walks and rides his bike everywhere. So if a cop, like tackled him on a bike, like they used to do here according to that 2017 force, use of force report that I was just reading, if someone, a cop said, oh, your light is out, and/or had his, like was following him in a patrol car, my son would not hear it. And I'm very concerned that he could be gunned down with impunity, because not one single elected official that I have found has commented about Chris Ruiz being shot in the torso and in the head, half a block from H Street. And the chief, Chief Mariani, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, handing the investigation over to the Sheriff's Department immediately. Cover up. I'm very concerned. I hope that you will all advocate for Chris and for those of us in Lompoc who want to be assured that the cops are not a threat to our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. You have two minutes to speak on City Matters.
Hi there. Yeah, I would just like to second that. It's a real concern for my family and just my, everybody that I care about in the community. I mean, if there's never any, if there's no explanation, it's hard to speculate about how somebody could have the death penalty with no trial and no explanation. And even Chris Ruiz's name was not mentioned in the original statement from the police department. Just seems really disrespectful for someone that no one has offered any kind of clear explanation of what happened and why. And without an explanation, it's, it's scary to think about. I mean, there are no cameras, there are no body cams. Like, if I were walking down the street and something happened and no one witnessed it and I died, who would advocate for me? And if the police say that this is what happened, this person isn't there to advocate for himself. He's dead. So, you know, they can, it's easy for them to offer an explanation that is very vague, and that can't be challenged by the other person who was involved, because they are no longer alive. So, yeah, it's scary. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Seeing no one call or rise for further, oh, we have one more coming to the podium. Just to repeat, the number is 805-875-8201. And you have two minutes for final oral communication tonight.
We're speaking about the homeless problem, correct? As best I can hear? What is the root cau- cause? The root cause of homelessness? You have to think deep into your memory. It is a constant problem throughout our whole nation and our whole planet. What is the root cause of homelessness? And how many different descriptions can you come up with that cause it? And if you are going to attack it, it seems to me that you're going to have to think deeply about what is it that causes homelessness? Nobody wants to be homeless, except the few rebellious that run away from home because they haven't figured out how to get along or feel comfortable or feel safe in that home. But there are so many ways that any group must make a list of what causes homelessness. And then how can we attack it? Or how can we help to eliminate so much homelessness? It's not just Lompoc's problem. It's everywhere. And it needs to be addressed everywhere. And you are a small group, you can't do all of that at once, but you can voice your opinion when you vote as to what causes homelessness. All right, thank you.
We will now close final oral communication and bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Ball for comments, meeting reports, requests.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I was able to jump on a League of California Cities Zoom call with Fiona Ma. She, Ma, she's the California State Treasurer. So it was pretty enlightening as to staying tuned to, a lot of resources are going to supposedly start to tumble down from the state. So that was educational to learn what tables we need to be at. Also attended the AAUW, had a fascinating discussion on climate change and its impact here locally, and some small efforts that we all can make. I found that really great. Just a reminder, there's 10 more days for the public survey that's online. It's also in Spanish. And believe it or not, at least I'm, I'm speaking for everyone up here, we do pay attention to those things. We do care about what the community has to say. So I know it's just a survey, but please take it seriously. There's lots of great questions. And pass it along to your friends. If they have opinions and they, they're willing to voice them to you, please send them towards that so we can hear how they feel. Let's see. I've always wanted to say this in this context, may the fourth be with you.
And also with you. Councilmember Vega.
I do have a council request, and I'm hoping the council will support me. In, in a request from commissioners and committee members that we've recently just put them on by district, I've had several requests. They're concerned with their safety and they'd like to have some sort of identification if they're going to be out as an extension of us in the community as far as the public safety commissioners. My experience with, these are requests with Planning Commission. And I know myself, as a former planning or public safety commissioner, I was given or by request allowed to have little business cards that identify that I am on a commission or committee. I've had requests from my commissioners that they, they'd like to have some sort of identifying document or something with their own cellphone, of course, and nothing serviced by the city. But I know for a fact that we have previously allowed that by department, by council budget. And I think it is a concern. I have people in District Two, they say, well, we're not, we need to be able to show people that we're here to help and, and be part of this. So what I'd like is, my request would be if we could actually look at our committee and commission handbook and, and see if we can adjust it that would allow staff to do this. I met some resistance. Before, I've met with department heads and they were okay with it. You know, individual committee, commission, department heads by request, if somebody requested some sort of identifying document. So the city has the ability to give our commissioners business cards with their own number and with their own email and whatever, but at least saying public safety or planning commissioner or whatever, because people do actually come up to them and ask them, how we, can we contact you and whatever. They are an extension of us through council, so I don't want them to be, I don't want it to be misinterpreted as they're not elected by the city. I want it to be through us as an extension of us, appointing them to our districts. So that's kind of what I, I have a council request. I wish you guys would support me, because they, they only want to be, have identification, because they're proud to be on the committees. And now that we did it by district, I think it's really important.
Councilmember Starbuck.
No, I'll absolutely give you a second. I just assumed that we had continued doing that. We've done it for years. I mean, when an OSA has business cards and a commissioner doesn't, no, absolutely, I think they should have something. They are an interface in the community.
Thank you. And I do have pictures of previously being, having business cards. If people say it hasn't happened, it's not true. You know, it's-
So I'm personally, I, I'm not necessarily adverse to this. I think there could be some legal issues or some updated challenges that I'd love to hear about. I will just say that I started on the Economic Development Committee in 2012. I never had a business card. I've not had one person that's on any commissioner committee from my side that's asked to be recognized with a business card. But I do hear you. I'm open to it, but-
Yeah. And I, and just to be clear, I've had from Planning Commissioner and Public Safety Commissioner, I've had those requests. So not making it up, I was told that this is the format that I need to bring it up in by staff. So that's what I'm doing. And I think it's pretty easy, you know? It's pretty easy, guys. You know, if these guys want to be a volunteer commissioner, committee member, least we can do is let them identify themselves. They're actually proud to be a part of it. We've already kind of alienated people by splitting them up and making sure that they live in our district. Least we can do is allow them to be recognized in our districts.
You've had your third, and so I would ask that staff review and provide input on costs and ramifications and best solutions for potentially solving this.
Yeah, I'll get with the city attorney so we can make those adjustments, too.
Okay. Anything else?
No, just thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
I have no reports.
You know, every now and then we, we, we learn from the great, I guess. I don't. My reports are, I attended the Delta IV launch out of Vandenberg, representing the city. It was amazing, as always, and I'm looking forward to more and more launches returning and how that will benefit our community for not only the tourism that it brings, but the contracts and the employment that it provides. So a huge asset to our community. And that large rumble we all get to fill is one more reason we get excited about living here. I participated at all levels of the Northern California Power Agency that we are members of, from being elected to the executive committee to the legend, regula- ledge and regulation calls that we've been making to our senators and our assemblymen and congressmen. The most recent with Senator Vadia has fully set up his staff, so we had an opportunity to talk with them and educate them on what we do, and then the regular meeting. Congratulations to Greg Ratcliffe. Our TAP TV manager retired after 17 years with us and left us in good shape with our radio station and our TAP TV station, as well as being able to stream information live. And he also met a council member's request, and now if you have one of the newer radios and you turn into KPEG, you will be able to see streaming not only the radio station, but the artist and the song. So if you have one of the more modern, high-tech radios, you get more information than, hey, I didn't say who it was. I mean, I'm saying he did a great job, not whose radio isn't working. So I attended the Planning Commission as part of our council rotations. I'm currently assigned to it. The Santa Barbara County COVID-19 Legislative Briefing. And I want to thank the police chief for providing an update on the PD and what's going on there. And to those in the community that are concerned about recent events, if we aren't speaking about it or the department isn't speaking to it, it means it's an open investigation and we don't have enough information to speak clearly on it. And it would be an injustice to both the victim and its, their family, as well as our department, to speak out on an issue until we absolutely have all the information. Again, to reiterate, City Hall is available by appointment. If you are having issues and need to meet with us, staff is available. There are a lot of phone numbers to try and get through. If you don't succeed the first time, try, try again, or reach out to one of us so we can get that appointment made for you. And I'm very excited that staff worked with the county and that we do have the Johnson &amp; Johnson pop-up, walk-up shot at the Saturday market starting this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So if you were holding out for that single shot for the vaccine, it's in town, it's Saturday. All you have to do is walk up, provide a bit of information so they can track who they've given the shot to, and you're one and done. So please take advantage of that. I do have a council request. As we move towards reopening and trying to support our local businesses, some adapted really well and found appreciation for the idea of outdoor dining. So I'd like staff to consider how we might accommodate the outdoor dining that we allowed during COVID, what we might be able to do to grant by permit the ongoing ability to have some outdoor dining. I know a lot of us enjoy that. I know a lot of businesses found that people discovered them because people were outside dining and didn't realize their business was open, much less still open, but just that they existed. So I know we've got a lot on our plates, but I think it would help. Our weather is great in unusual times, and so having the ability to dine outdoors and make accommodations for maybe a few parking lots or a bit of sidewalk, be accommodated would really help. Yes?
Didn't we already do a resolution that allowed that?
It was temporary. It's only for COVID.
So what we could ask for is just an extension to make it a permanent, and then it would go to planning and change in our zoning ordinance. If it helps business, I'll second it.
I'll third it.
Thank you.
I'll forth it.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate it. We will adjourn this meeting until the next regular council meeting of 6:30 p.m. on May 18th, 2021. Good night.